Coming out of executive session and moving into our open session, we begin with support services and turn it over to Mark.
Thanks, Commissioners. I'm gonna jump in here with Jen. Are you on, Jen?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm gonna start off with the September financials. I'll share my screen. So beginning on page two of your handout, we have the comparison of the revenue for current expense from 2022 and 2021. So through September of 2021, we are, I mean, sorry, 2022, we've received $32,837,523 compared to last year, $31,703,495. We're at 81% of our budgeted revenue this year compared to 80% last year. The benchmark for November, I mean, for September, sorry, is 75%. And stop me if you have any questions along the way. Moving on to the Treasurers revenue detail, through September of 2022, we have received $22,903,584 compared to last year at the same time, $21,234,188. And we are at, in the Treasurers Department, 85% of the total budgeted revenue received compared to last year, 81%. And again, the benchmark is 75. So we're looking good there. And on the expenditures for the general fund, through September of 2022, we have expended $29,155,656 compared to last year at the same time, $28,86,202. We're at 66% of our budgeted expenditures so far this year compared to 68% last year. So overall, we're looking good in the, in the general fund.
Hey Jen, can I interrupt you real quick?
Yeah.
Just to, can you go back to page seven? Oh, I'm sorry. It's probably not your page seven. It's just a revenue one. I just wanted to kind of highlight for the Commissioners, the two areas where we're seeing amounts that are coming in that are, that are beyond the original projections that we had considerably. And that would be in our local retail sales and use tax.
I think, yeah. We'll get, we'll get there.
Oh, sorry.
Sales tax page.
I'll let you go then.
But yeah, here's the, the sales tax is looking really, really good, like you said.
As is the city counting assistance.
Yeah. Yeah, that is.
On the, on the expenditure page. Oh, go ahead. We'll just catch you at the end.
Okay. Did you want me to move on then, Mark? Are you, are you good? Is that all you wanted to point out? Okay. On the special fund, the revenue streams comparison, and this is page six, I believe, of your handout. We have kind of a combination. A lot of things are down compared to last year, but overall, we're, we're up over the previous four years. So like the community development revenues are down just a little over last year, 473,000 over last year. And the rural sales and use tax, that's, that's up a little bit. That follows along with our sales tax. So that's up about 48,000. Looking at the the regular where did it go? Oh, the sales tax here. So we're up 552,000 over last year. So that looks really good. The homelessness prevention filings are down. That's down about 197,000 from last year. The, the lodging tax is up 7, or 92,000 over last year. And then the REIT is down about 120,000 from, from last year. So a little bit of a mix of things being up and down on the special revenue streams. Going to the, the sales tax detail, we are, we've collected 6,738,000 so far this year. Our budget was 7.2 million for 2022. And so we only have 461,000 left to collect this year before we meet our budget. So our projection this year is looking closer to about $9 million. So if we received exactly what, what we did last year in October, October, November, and December of this year, we would be at 8.95 million. So most likely we'll be a little bit above that. That's been the trend. This year is we've received more money each month than we did last year in the same month. So that looks really good. Any questions on the sales tax?
Just as a reminder, this is like two months behind, right?
It, we receive, yeah, we received the sales tax two months after it's received from the state. Yes.
Right. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the sixth year, the financial recap, we are, our cash is at 25,415 at the end of September. Our revenue for the general fund, we've received 81% of our budget and we've expended 66% of our budget through September. On the special fund, the cash balances, special funds, I should say, we are overall at 54,848 through the end of September. And most funds are looking good cash-wise. We're up quite a bit over the previous five years overall with all of our special funds. On the motor pool summary, we've expended $1,504,881 at the end of September compared to last year, $1,117,948. And that's because we've, we've gotten more vehicles into the lease process. So that, that makes sense that it's that much more than last year. Moving on to the special fund revenue, special funds revenue. Overall, we have received $46,754,895 this year compared to $45,454,240 last year. We're at 58% of our budgeted revenue this year compared to 79% last year overall. And then on the, on the expenditure side, we, we have expended $33,700,201 compared to last year, $31,278,394. We're at 39% of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to 46% last year. So questions or comments on any of this?
So just for the other Commissioners, keep in mind, even though that 54 looked like such a big number, over the last two years, we got over 10 million in that account from ARPA. That makes a big difference in that number. So since that's one time coming in, that's one time also that we were going out. Just wanted to make that point. It's still big, but it's not as big as it looks.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay. Anything else on, on the financials? Okay, then we'll move on to, I'm gonna stop sharing. We'll move on to ARPA. So just bringing back to Commissioners, the the second round of funding, the final review and, and permission to place these projects on the action agenda for the 25th. And then I wanted to request approval for the county administrator to sign the seven. We have seven outside, outside the county ARPA contracts for, for different projects that have been tentatively approved. So.
I'm supportive.
Okay, great.
I'm good.
So I'm also supportive, just with one question. So I, I didn't know that we agreed to do the 125,000 to the city. That was one of the things that I know we had discussed, but Mark, can you have a conversation with Jeff to see if, if that's workable for them? Because in some of the conversations that I had with the city, it wasn't clear that, that that would be helpful to what they need to accomplish in terms of, you know, it would help on maybe some engineering and design, you know, but might not be able to secure the rest of the funding in the amount of time, or it might not be, you know, just kind of with engineering estimates and the supply chain, it just might be a little bit under. So if we could just follow up on that.
I can.
And there's nothing that says that we can't just pass it standalone later either.
So do we want to pull this project off and just approve all of the others that are on the, the list and then come back to this? Or do you want to just plan on having it be on the agenda and pull it off if it's not feasible?
I think it'd probably be easier to pull it now and then add it later.
Yeah, I'd rather not pull it off during a meeting. It'll bring up more questions than we have answers to.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Great. So we'll pull that contract and we'll also pull, pull off that 125,000 off of the ARPA list. Does that sound good, Commissioners?
Perfect.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have for you.
Thanks, Jen. So now we're gonna go to Mr. Taylor.
Good morning, Commissioners. First thing I'd like to talk about is the pitching machines. While we were on our tour, we talked about the potential of placing two pitching machines at Sand Hill Park and predominantly where the collapsed pitching area is now. There are some corrections I'll need to do before the decision's made. It was based on four pitching machines. We took it down to two because of the space. So on the first line on your item, the cost is correct. However, it's a 30 by 32 strut pole structure, which is approximately 58,000. So the total investment for two pitching machines, one fast pitch, hardball, one softball, and all the peripherals is $113,235. And it'll be on the decision, I believe, the next one, which is next week. Any questions about the pitching machines?
None from me.
All right.
You identified where this funding, is it gonna be real estate excise tax?
We have not. And, and the quote that we gave you is a rough estimate based on both Bud and I checking each other's figures. Because of the cost, we'll have to go out and find a contractor to actually come in and look at those pieces. So we wanted to give you a rough estimate at this point and then move forward if it's something that looks feasible. All right. Next item we have is the cover at Truman Glick. During our tour, it was brought up the potential of putting a cover in. The cover would be a 22 by 40 by 14. And it's about $17,140 for the cover itself. Sales tax, of course, that's in there. And a 10% origination fee, the total cost is $20,362.32. And that will be on the next decision for you Commissioners to make a decision. Is there any questions about the cover?
Are we doing that? Do we, are we under, do, is this off of the works roster? Where do we select our, our people?
This is just for the one cover. When we did the tour out at Truman Glick, that was the one that was brought up.
No, I meant, how do we select the, the person, the people we're doing it with?
Oh, okay. We kind of went out, right now it was just on the lowest bid that we didn't go out for an official bid, which is something we can do, but we did get a handwritten bid from a couple places. This was the less, least expensive.
So you went out and got it from a few places then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any question about the cover?
No, I think it's a great idea. He, he's, he's done a lot out there and he's, he's a hard worker. But, and this will be property of the county, correct?
Correct. The next one we have is a, a request for a equipment trailer. When we got the new vehicles, we didn't realize that we have a tractor out there that's about 10,000 pounds, which currently we can't move around to the different sites. So we're requesting a trailer, which will haul 15,900 pounds. It's a 25 foot by five, five foot goose neck. And the estimated cost for that is $13,999.
Have you checked with Public Works to see if there's a possible wash down?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions about the trailer? The final one is a federal grant, which was actually approved before I arrived. We're requesting that we be able to get this signed and send it back in, changing the direction of the grant. It was predominantly funded for a specific position, which is no longer here. Now we're bringing it back online with what the training and exercise coordinator, coordinator actually does. So the contract will, if, when we are, if we're audited, it actually fits with the work that the person is doing. Is there any questions about the request for grant change? It doesn't extend it, doesn't change the money amount. It just changes the work. What we're actually gonna do for work.
So there's no need to change anything in the proposal or further in the.
No, ma'am.
Good.
Any questions about that?
For me?
No.
Awesome. That's all I have.
Commissioners, on that tilt trailer, we are asking though, for the park's current expense budget to have a budget adjustment because we don't have the funding in there. Is the board good with that?
Now you're pushing it.
So that'll be in our next supplemental?
Yes. So we'll give the information to Jen. And then the pitching machines and the RV cover would both be REIT to funding.
If we were, if we're to do it, I would appreciate if we actually specify where it's coming from when we do it and make it REIT to.
Yes, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane, John. So the next item that we have is, we went out for an RFQ for real estate services. We only received one response to it from Richard Beckman Realty Group. There are a number of little changes in the proposal that came to us. The amount that he is actually requesting in this contract, residential land went from 5% to 6%. So commercial remains at seven, residential six, vacant land eight percent. There is new language regarding minimum commission of $1,200 regardless of the sales price or the proceeds. And a $500 fee charged for an official broker price opinion or a market analysis when we request it. Are there any questions regarding this proposal from Richard Beckman Realty Group?
Well, I think he does a great job.
No, the thing on the, the CMAs are, is different, but I gotta tell you, he does so much work. And in my opinion, he's within his bounds on what he's also asking for us. I have nothing but praise for the work he's done for the county and the money that he has saved us and made us over the years. So I'd be proud to watch this one go forward.
I'm supportive as well.
Thank you. I will move that forward for official approval at our, at our next regular board meeting. The next item I have for you is proposed agreement with Mason Transit Authority for some parking spaces up at the MTA in Belfair. So this is the, the new park and ride in Belfair off of Log Yard Road, I believe. So this, what this is, is I actually had to hunt it down. I was surprised when I received it. And I actually had the opportunity to sit down with Loretta and talk with Loretta. Our utility folks will park our trucks in various locations so that when they come into work, that's where they stop, pick up the truck, and then they go out to the, the, the utility locations. In our current areas, they've had some problems with transients hanging around and making it uncomfortable for staff to, they don't feel real secure when they're coming in, especially as our mornings are gonna get a little bit darker and our after daylight's just not as long during the day. So in a conversation with MTA, MTA was generous enough to say, you know, we don't have people up there. So we'd actually appreciate it if the county had a routine process where they went into that property. They actually have a fenced area where the vehicles would be secured and our staff could go in there. And, and that's where they would do their exchange from their personal vehicle to their work vehicle. So there's no cost associated with this agreement. It's just a, an agreement that allows us to utilize the space.
The sad part though, since there's no cost, there's also a small limit on time. I would love to see us give them a little stipend and extend it out for many years. But I'm okay with this moving forward. It just would make sense for us as a county to have a, the ability to count on utilizing that for, for, you know, years at a time.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. It's also fenced, so our, our vehicles will be more secure also.
Yep.
Great. Now this is a good partnership. Appreciate MTA's willingness and it seems like a good opportunity.
Do you want to see if I can extend the 12-month period to something more?
I would. I'd like to see us get several years. Loretta's got her hand up though.
Come on in, Loretta.
Good morning.
Morning.
So the, the contract is renewable automatically unless we, either party ends the contract. So, and then the other thing to keep in mind, Commissioners, is that once the freight corridor is constructed, we will have a paved access to the Belfair facility. And it would be my expectation at that time that our folks would be reporting to Belfair and that is a secure facility. So that's where we would ultimately be parking and, and reporting to. So just, just keep that in mind also.
It sounds like year, year to year would probably be the best way to go for now until, until we can see into the future or until the future is present.
Sounds like a yes.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, sorry.
All righty, I will go ahead and, I will go ahead and get that agreement going with MTA. Thank you. Nicole, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Want to talk about health insurance contributions?
Yeah, thank you. Good morning. So I just brought forward, so it's our annual request to put on the action agenda item to amend our resolution for last year for the contribution rates for 2023. So recommending just the additional $52 increase to the monthly contribution rate to increase it to 1466 per month. And then once we did the calculations on the pooling rates, that was what's on the briefing document on what the county's pooling rates would be based off of our spreadsheet and our, how we've done it in the past. It's been pretty consistent. I haven't, it's been about $100. It looks like the pooling, it was less than $100 that it changed for the pooling difference between last year and this year. And there's only 96 individuals in the pool this year versus last year where there were 103.
I'm supportive of moving forward. A little comment. Nicole, I want to thank you. I've been working with you for a lot of years now. When it comes to our risk pool and our, our other insurances, you just do an excellent job and I very much appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think we all do. You do a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I love what I do.
It shows.
Thanks, Nicole.
Perfect. Thank you.
So move on to public health. They wouldn't, oh, I'm sorry. I jumped to your Commissioner Follow-up items. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, yeah, so it looks like we have one item here for updates to our calendars. I think Diane was adding this just in case we needed to make any additions.
I think it was for the November 4th joint city-county. So the city council and county commissioners are gonna be on November 4th. It's a follow-up to our meeting that we had earlier in the year. Is that correct, Diane?
No, it was to allow them to update their calendars because there isn't a Commissioner meeting tomorrow. So in case something was missed last week, that's going to happen between now and next Tuesday, just so they can do the public announcement.
Right. I think this is a great idea because this just gives, give us the opportunity. Things always pop up. And so giving us the opportunity to let the public know what we're doing, I think is a fantastic idea. So I appreciate, but I don't think I have any extras items.
I was completely unprepared for that, so I'm trying to do a quick look real quick. The Mason Transit Authority Park and Ride ribbon cutting.
That's right.
Think, you know, I, I'm gonna be there.
Yeah. So will I.
I think that was the big one.
And I think we have a meeting that day also, Commission meeting.
Yep. I don't have anything new to add to my calendar, so. Okay. Any other items for Commissioner discussion? Jennifer.
Were you going to bring up the county administrator list now or after help? The Port of Greatview request?
Oh, thank you, Jen. I thought, I actually thought you were gonna bring that up, but that, that's perfect. Yeah, perfect timing. We can talk about that. We, from, I believe it was from one of the Commissioners at the Port of Greatview has requested.
All right. Perfect. So let me know if you didn't get those. We can send those to you in the chat box or I can send you an email. All right, so we.
So the, we got a, we got a request from the Port of Greatview for assistance with the maintenance and operational cost of their new boat launch. They were requesting the use of, of rural county sales tax, the .09 funds. And the dollar amount, Jen, she actually followed up with that eventually, didn't she? How much was she asking for?
She's asking for 20,000. And I have a call-in to Tim to check to see if this is a lawful use of .09 funds. So we'll get back to you on that. But we just wanted to make sure that you knew there was a request because the EDC is, their contract is going on the agenda for next Tuesday. So this was in response to the request for comments going out.
This is a heads up.
Yep.
For just a little bit of history on, and that, I, I didn't know that was coming either, so I missed it somehow. I do know they came to us some years ago just for history and asked for help with building it and some funding for it. And we had turned them down. So I'm not saying that the two are connected, but we'll keep that in mind if we reach out to help somebody. But then at the same time, we gotta ask ourselves, will that be? Will that be the same that we can do for all the other? Ports. So I'll be curious to see what Tim comes back with, but if it is, uh, just remember that. We weren't there for when, when they needed us that one time. If we can, we try to be there to help. We just don't know how.
I was actually in, participating in a county administrator meeting last week where we were discussing point oh nine funds because. Legislative session's coming up and we're, we're trying to get the sunset date of that pushed forward. During that discussion, uh, there were some other counties that actually mentioned that they used point oh nine funds. To assist some of their smaller port districts. So be interested to get confirmation from Tim. Uh, that that is an allowable cost, but it sounded like it was something that other counties are, are actually doing too.
Yeah, unlike other counties, we have a lot of port districts per capita. Just know that.
Yeah, so if we open the door, it could open wide. That's all I had. Uh, unless Jen, did I forget anything else or Diane? Thank you. So I think we're ready to move on to public health now.
And public health, it is microphone working. Okay. Alright, good morning commissioners. So I just had the one quick item this morning. So as you know, last year we hired, uh, four people based on our COVID funding. Code funding comes to an end, some of it comes to end, um, actually the, the end of this week. Some of it ends the end of this year. So what we're looking to do is to transition. That team of four people from COVID funding over to FPHS funding, which we received a contract on, uh, this year, July 1st. Adding another $500,000, which, uh, more than covers what we're doing with this to include the, the previous FPHS money. So we're looking to, to take these positions from COVID funding to a more permanent FPHS funding. So the, the nurse would go from COVID into life coursework. We have a communications person. Public health emergency response and then cross-selling capabilities with the clerical position. So all of them meet the definitions through FPHS. We have new barcodes from Department of Health that we're going to be adding into the system. Yeah, through Jennifer and I, it's actually a pretty easy process at this point. We want to make sure we get these people transitioned out of COVID dollars and start really accessing those FPHS dollars so we can. Show the legislature, we are using the FPHS dollars that they have given us. This last year, we had to write a check back to. Um, the state and we would prefer not to do that this next year.
I'm supportive. I just asked that if we're going to do it, do it out of another fund, that we also have a, uh. A refresher point to where we look at it yearly or, or bi-yearly to make sure that, uh. It's being paid for out of those funds and not the transferring over to the general fund. Without knowledge in our consideration. That's, that's what I'd ask.
Dave, does, will their job duties change at all or will they be doing the same job? Because I know the COVID was very specific as to what they could and couldn't do.
So this, that's still be on call for COVID. Um, but primarily, so we'll have one person that's going to be doing primarily communications. One's going to do emergency response planning. Uh, life coursework, which is, I mean, a broad variety of things. So think diabetes, obesity, those sorts of things. The, the duties will change. So as we, these barcodes submitted, we'll also submit those things as well.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that you check with HR to make sure that they're, the duties that they're performing are. In accordance with their job descriptions.
Yeah, then, you know, FPH is, is a weird fund in that you're, you're kind of trying to spread peanut butter over a big piece of toast and it affects just. Everybody in the department. So there's little pieces that, that everybody can touch. So everybody works in communication. So we're at the. We're at the break these out. Yeah, we were already used to doing that. I mean, our people work in multiple programs every single day. So we do track that. Uh, and these will be tracked in that same system.
I think it's a great idea and if we can keep people, I think that's exciting. I don't want to, I don't want to have to get rid of anybody.
It'd be great when you just, the grant management piece comes out and we can just plug it all bang right into that. That'd be great.
Yep.
Look, I'm most supportive as well.
In response to Commissioner Netherlands' request, um, Jen and I are going to be meeting with Dave and Casey. Uh, to go over that general fund contribution that goes into public health. Uh, predominantly, I believe it's used, uh, as the match portion of grants that we receive. Uh, but we should have additional detail associated with that after our meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, my main concern is just if it dries up that we have noticed with those positions, that those positions are connected to it.
And Dave, the FPS, um, or FPHS, uh, that was, that was funded for the full biennium?
Right.
Okay.
And it's, it's, so it's in law going forward. Now the, the funding levels, I think the legislature can change those at the stroke of a pen. But the FPHS piece is written into law, so counties will be getting FPHS funding.
Great. This is a big pivot for the state. So this is, this is a good problem for us to have.
Right, it, it is. And it's, it's a question that we, we had at the conferences last week. We met with several of us administrators saying, so if FPHS is doing. Um, this amount of work for us, what is the county contribution doing for us? And do we need, you know, how do we adjust? Maybe make that a smaller thing because it's being taken up by FPHS. You know, how do we, how do we, it was a big discussion this week. Uh, a lot of differing opinions on it.
As long as we're keeping local control, that we don't take that away from us, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, and, and that was part of that discussion as well.
Good. Good. If you need help with, uh, pushing our message, let me know.
Well, we had a, a really good meeting about, especially about local control. Uh, and I had a discussion with the. State epidemiologist about returning the HIV program back to local public health. So we have that. Uh, direct contact with our HIV patients in the county. So we're, we are aware of what they're doing as far as case management.
That's great.
Well, that's all I have.
I'm sure there's anything for Dave?
No, welcome back.
Thanks.
I did have one topic to discuss that, that kind of overlaps with Dave's shot. I wanted to get some commissioner feedback on and, and, and just see what options that we had. So last week I, I went over to Community Lifeline and meet with Athena and her team with Melissa Casey from Public Health. Um, and you know, they're still, they're still struggling, um, in order to, uh, get their capacity up, uh, here. You know, as we head into the colder winter months, the rain is right around the corner. And so. Um, they've had some opportunities and they have gotten some grant funding, uh, from the state to. Do a daytime recovery cafe, um, which is a, which is a, a model. Um, you know, that they can bring some folks off the street, uh, that are working on recovery and sobriety and those kinds of things and get. Uh, if not out of the, out of the weather, then at least get connected to some resources as well. And so that's, that's been a big boost for them. Uh, but they also have an opportunity to pull in about 600,000 more dollars, um, from a federal grant that's passed through, through, uh, the state department of commerce. Um, and so they're looking for some help with match that would go to staffing that would increase the capacity as we head into the winter months. And so. Um, they need to come up with about a 25% match on $600,000. And so I wanted to get the commission's feelings about, um, you know, kind of asking Mark and Dave and Melissa to sit down with. Uh, Community Lifeline to talk about what that might look like. Um, as well as, as going to the city and seeing what the city might be willing to contribute to help getting there. I, I think. Collectively, if we kind of put our heads together, we can figure this out, um, so that we can get more people in there, um, you know, kind of in a. Limited duration throughout the winter, at least as they scale up on these more sustainable funding models that they're, they are getting, which was one of the things that we had asked them to do, right? Was, you know, if we're going to support you, um, you know, additionally, or even with what we, you know, have done historically. Then, you know, the expectation is that they find a sustainable funding model that, that works for them. So they're working on that. Um, and I just, I wanted to get the commission's sense on, uh, kind of empowering staff to, to sit down with them and. And maybe come back to us with some options with the city's participation.
I love the idea of, of, of including the city in this because, you know, they're kind of, well, they are in the city. And so having the, the city, um, partner with all of us as well, I think is a, is a great idea. But I, I really like the idea of having Mark and, and Dave and Melissa sit together and with Community Lifeline. I think. They, they can use guidance. And, and if they, this is an issue that affects everyone. So if we can help them, I would, I would like to.
Uh, so as for myself, I. I think the, the inclusion of the city is absolutely necessary. Uh. You know, this has got to be a joint lifting of a weight if we're going to do it, but at the same time. Uh, I would like to be able to help them, but I do think that whatever we put together, we should also have some type of deliverables or something involved with. Uh, putting out more monies. Uh, I'd like to see it actually showing the benefits and seeing what it's doing to actually get people off the streets. Instead of just helping them to stay on the streets. So if they can provide that as well, it'd be appreciated, but I am, uh, in favor of even investing in the. These type of things if they can show that benefit. Uh, and. Even if we had to carry it alone, I, I don't think we should and I, I hope we don't, but if we did, I think we should consider it if they can prove. That it will help bring them off the streets, not just continue to keep them on the streets.
Oh, that made me think, um, this, this, this thing that they're doing is, um, is there a way that we could, with the, the recovery cafe? Is there a way, Dave, that we could look at that and, and maybe use that as a pilot? Because if it's a pilot, we could, they could, um, reach out for extra funding as well. So maybe that, that might be something to, like, I, I, you know, I don't need answers right now, but, but there's. There could be some. Resources available that we're not thinking about. So, um, maybe brainstorm. Because if it's a pilot project, maybe, maybe we could reach out to not just the state, but the feds.
If I, if I could maybe take that, Dave. So my understanding, Commissioner, is that that program is fully funded by the state. So this was something that they had went out for to help, um, be able to open the facility more during the day. Which is one of the challenges is, you know, they're overnight, um, you know, is, uh, for, for sleeping and everything. And then in the morning. You know, they, they get people kind of set for the day and then out into the community. And then, you know, there's really. You know, they can't come back into the facility, whereas with the recovery cafe, um, program that they have funded, uh, it allows for a little bit more. Um, opportunity to open the building up during the day and bring people back in if they're meeting the program's criteria. Um, it's not. It's low barrier. It's not no barrier. Um, you know, like the shelter, there are some requirements to get in, but. Um, they're, they're pretty manageable, I think. Um, and so I, I'm pretty sure that that program is fully funded. It's this additional grant money, um, that they could access that would be over a three-year period. Um, that would help them provide more staffing to increase that capacity, um, even in the overnight hours. So.
A total of 150 over three years. Uh, I'm sorry.
I know, that, that's the, so that's what I'm hoping Mark and, and team can kind of dive into as to what the. What the commitment needs to be upfront from Community Lifeline in order to access that. So it's increasing. Um, some funding that was, you know, that they've already gotten, um, based on what's left over from a grant. And so it's, it's over a period of time, but I'm not sure when they need to produce that match. Um, and so I think there's still some details that need to be worked out. And of course, you know, some partnership again from the city would be helpful on that. So I, that's what I kind of want to send. Mark, Dave and Melissa on a little bit of a fact-finding mission to, to kind of see what, you know, what the requirements are and, and, and how we can be supportive.
Well, I agree. At the very minimum, let's send them over and let's find out, uh, there's a big difference, uh, if we were sharing the load with the city. And it was over three years. It's 25,000 per year compared to us carrying a load, 150K. So I'm definitely love to hear what it comes out at, but I still would like to see benefits as well.
Great. And then, uh, comfortable with me keeping tabs on that?
Yes.
Next couple of weeks.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. So good, Mark, Dave? Got it. Great. Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else for Dave, we can. Move on to Loretta and Public Works.
Morning.
Morning.
First up commissioners, we have a proposal for transferring. Right of way in front of the new Mason Transit Facility. So, um, as part of the, the development of the new transit facility. MTA constructed Log Yard Road and the Frontage, um, headed south. In accordance with county design standards and are requesting to dedicate that to the county at this time. And Mike's got some follow-up details on that.
Good morning. Uh, as you know, they've, uh, Mason Transit has built the new facility as, as the writer was describing. The road is built to county standards. Uh, so we have the information of how they, how they've, uh, built it and, uh. At first we were having a little question about the Frontage Road as to whether we would want to take that over, but that is in alignment along. Uh, an existing road that's being used now and would in the future, uh, extend out. So we, we, uh, as staff would recommend that we would. Take this over. And put it on a road log. We'd just like to have, uh, the board, uh, any, uh. Any, uh, issues with that?
I'm still trying to understand why. Maybe you can explain it to me a little bit because I'm, you know, what would be the reason and the benefit for the county taking that in? Instead of being managed by the property owners. I know we have people all the time, uh, across the street that have asked and talked to us about taking over roads. So what would be the benefit? Why would we do it?
So the, the main line that they, that shows on the map there is the, uh, beginning portion of Log Yard Road itself. So. Uh, that would actually eventually connect up to the freight corridor. And so that's one of the alignments that we've been, uh, working on. Acquiring right away for that. Uh, the secondary, uh, offshoot, uh, to the south. That's, uh, that's along an alignment that the, uh. The utilities and waste actually utilized to get to their facility. So that's a road being used by the county. Um, our facility as it is. So that's just what, that's our preliminary look at it.
And so we use that road. We do.
The one to the south, yes.
It is also the alignment for the, the sewer trunk line as well. So we would use that in the future for maintenance. Well, it makes it part of the overall network. So in terms of connectivity, it is something that we. Have identified as part of our transportation plan, um, and is. Part of our system. Our, our envisioned future system.
Here we go, talking about the future again. So did Tip Cap take a look at this?
Um, Tip Cap has not looked specifically at the dedication portion. But Tip Cap certainly was part of the transportation plan update process and made recommendations about. What, where the connectors would be located. Um, certainly the overall transportation plan, but not this specific. Dedication issue, Commissioner.
Gotcha.
I personally think that all these things should go through them. That's why we're established them. So I don't know why we would bypass that.
You said it was on, it's, it's on the plan, right?
It is, and we're certainly not bypassing them, Commissioner Netherlands. We have not had an opportunity to meet. Since the time that this proposal came before us. So we're waiting to get a, a quorum. And then absolutely we can take this before Tip Cap.
Well, just for clarification, I understand you said that it is, uh, uh, us taking, uh, and taking on this is in the plan?
It's identified as a connector in our transportation element of the plan and also the Belfair Mobility Plan as well.
You know, it feels like we, we talked about this too at our last, um, transit meeting. And so I, I supported it there and I'll support it here too.
So, yeah, I mean, I think I'm generally supportive. I mean, I think there's a lot of development happening in that area that ultimately is going to be part of. Our road system in the future. Um, I see there being, uh, benefit to that. Um, you know, I guess just the, I, I don't have a problem with Tip Cap taking a look at it, um, you know, and weighing in if that's sort of what. The process that we want to go through, that's, that's fine. Um, you know, and then I think just sort of being clear about, you know, what the. What the scenarios and criteria is for when we take roads into our inventory. what the scenarios and criteria is for when we take roads into our inventory um versus not, how do we weigh that out? You know, I think that's probably a worthwhile discussion too, but I think um just sort of seeing you know, are we gonna have the same discussion about the the apartment complex and uh the single-family homes and then taking those into our inventory as well, I mean, so I I you know, we're gonna be talking about this when where there's development, in particular in a UGA, so just being clear on what the process is, I think would be helpful.
Uh just a a quickie on the the apartments and the development up the um up the ridge. That developer has indicated that they are not wanting to dedicate the roads to the county, and they have been constructed to county standards, but they are wanting to keep those private roads. But yes, absolutely, Commissioner, I think that a follow-up conversation about what are the pros and cons, what are the liabilities, what are the benefits, um absolutely, would love to bring that back to commissioners for conversation.
I also think with this particular stretch that we're looking at, you know, since it does connect to a public publicly, you know, public facility um in a park and ride, that there is an expectation that those roads will be maintained, um not just from a preservation standpoint, but from a weather-related standpoint as well.
Absolutely.
Um and that's not something that I would want to burden Mason Transit with, um you know, if we're we're having folks that are utilizing that um you know, as part of a worker-driver program, getting up to the shipyard or other things, I think there is an expectation that that those roads will be maintained and cared for at the same uh standard that other other roads are um including the state route and and other county roads, so I think for that reason, its connection to the public facility is is actually what um you know, is a is a reason to bring that into our inventory.
Yeah, that is a great point, and frequently because of during snow events, we will work with Mason Transit to also clear the parking areas because folks are still wanting to commute, right, so we're gonna be there providing service to the parking area as well. Typically.
Also, our we're signing an MOA with them to put our utilities vehicles back there.
Right, exactly. Yes.
Probably a lot safer to take a bus on a bad weather day, so encouraging, that would be great too.
All right, commissioners, uh so would you like to have us move forward, um review with TIPCAP at the next meeting, what's your pleasure on that?
So all of my my opinion would be, I'm fine moving it forward if TIPCAP wants to review it, I mean, I think I think that's fine, but I am supportive of bringing this into our inventory for its connection to a public facility.
Yep, and I am supportive as well, like I said previously.
And although I think it should go, I'm not gonna stand in this way. I think TIPCAP should be looking at these before we do them, and and we should be deciding what all the benefits are and what our policies are gonna be for doing it. It just seems like it's another just chunk out of the uh out of the blue up there, but I will not stand this way.
Thank you, commissioners. Next up, Richard and Justin have an update on the pressure-reducing valve project in the Russell Wood community.
Yeah, thank you, Loretta, uh good morning, commissioners, uh just giving you a heads up, we discussed about it last week. Uh the contractor that is doing the work had to push off another week. Um again, we've had the proper notification, we've we've changed uh Facebook updates, we've changed the the reader board that's out there, uh been in communication with the homeowners association um and the public, and just uh we're planning on starting on Tuesday, October twenty fifth, and then hopefully that will just last for uh three days with no hiccups, so fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed and good planning.
Yes, well, it's, yeah, the five Ps.
Good luck, good luck on it.
Any questions about the project, commissioners?
No, I think it it's proving to be difficult, I know at the Pub- Public Works Board, we've got so many projects that are being pushed out because of supply issues and and staffing. So it's it's a it's a different world out there now. So good luck.
Thank you. Right, perfect.
All right, thank you. And then next up, we've got the downtown fuel facility that you may recall, we have made use of in the past, and it's kind of been idling for a while and is a bit of a maintenance challenge, so Pete Medcalf, Gary Alba, and um I believe Kelly have been working together and taking a look at what's the what's the best way to deal with our downtown fuel facility, and Mike's got an update on that.
So what the team has uh come up with a proposal is to have the facility decommissioned, and we have an estimate here for that, about seven thousand six hundred dollars. Uh what this will do will uh decommission the facility where there'll be no more uh need for DOE inspections. Um we're not utilizing the facility at all, but it will not put it out completely, it would it will be is it will be a temporary stay of execution, so to speak, is we won't have to have it tested or anything, but if we ever decide to open it back up, we can do that, we can actually uh get it back running, so it's not a permanent, but it's a temporary permanent.
And that makes sense, I'm sitting here, when you said that number, I'm like, what the heck? Over the years, it has come up many times about that uh being decommissioned, and those were not the numbers, but if can do if you can do this temporary way of doing it, or how you're doing it, I think that's a brilliant way to think outside the box, and it's seven K. It's a it's a very brilliant way to think outside the box, so I'm very supportive of that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and again, hats off to Pete and Gary and Kelly and team working together to to get this resolved.
Yeah, great job, I I think it's a great idea.
All right, commissioners, well, we'll move forward on that. Then the only other item I have is just a a quickie, I was fortunate to attend the homeowners association meeting this weekend, and it was great to see the collaboration amongst various homeowners associations tackling common issues, and certainly um was excited to be part of the the county team there to help provide support and answers and um how to plug in better, so look forward to future meetings on that front, and uh I'll have to pass on that folks were very complimentary of our road network, and that's great, good job to all of our our team engineering survey, right-of-way, admin, operations, everyone who makes that happen, so definitely proud of our team um providing great service to our community in that regard. And then we were able to distribute some solid waste vouchers, and thanks to Republic Services and of course our our partners and our solid waste team that were able to help with some trouble areas and get some cleanup going. And Richard's got a plug, I don't know if Richard's still on here, yes, he is, about a reminder to put those vouchers to work.
Yeah, please do. Our spreadsheet shows we've distributed four hundred and eighty-nine vouchers, and we've only had two hundred and fourteen of those be utilized today. So if you've distributed them to somebody, please remind them to utilize them, and and if anybody is out there listening that actually got one, please utilize it, because we've only brought in about a hundred and forty-five tons. And that's, we've got four free days worth, that's about one day. So we've got quite a bit more that could be utilized, and we've only got a few weeks left to do it for this year. Yes.
Wasn't that date extended?
What's that, please?
So October, it was October thirty-first, right, now were the days extended?
Ye- yes, but still, that's only to the end of November now, that it's still just a few weeks.
Right, so we want to make sure that they know that it's not um that the dates have been extended, so they can still use them, even though they got expiration dates is.
We'll we'll still take them right up to the end of the end of November, that would that'll give us time to quantify what we've gotten and get that number to Republic Services for their records, whatever they do with it, so. Hopefully, people just really put these to use.
With that, uh can you come and speak at our next meeting to let the public know that they've been extended? Uh my certificates of uh were older ones, and I was actually signing them with Loretta's permission and saying that as per Loretta uh and sending them over, they've been used, I could use a few more if I can get them, especially if they had the updated date printed on them, it'd be appreciated. Uh the trash mash has been used in them, and I know they could use a few more, I was able to get some help from the other commissioners uh uh early on to be able to provide them with more, because the other commissioners each gave me a a couple. Uh I don't know if you remember commissioners, uh vouchers that they that the ones that were used, it was the trash mash, the um one which uh his group and what they've been doing, but I know that they could use a few more, so if it's possible, a few more uh certs with uh updated uh timing, that'd be great, if you want me to pass more out uh to the public, because I know the ones I gave were used, I'd be happy to do that as well.
You bet, you bet, I know Kevin has a few on him right now, so we'll get those to you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, commissioners, that's about all, unless Mike's got any other updates.
Uh we started Nathan Lake Road paving project today, and they're doing the grinding. Uh tomorrow, they'll be paving the rest of the week and try to get this accomplished before it's too wet.
Yeah, the rain is coming.
What wet, I haven't seen anything that looks wet for a long time.
Uh well, we're supposed to get a little bit of showers by the weekend here, and so we're trying, they're gonna try to get it done, accomplish before that.
Crazy.
Yes, it has been dry.
Yeah, Loretta, I wanted to to thank you for coming out Saturday, what a great turnout and a lot of great meeting. I think there were six, six at least um homeowner association boards that were there, and we had um Chief Spurling um Patty from the assessor's office and uh Trish from building and planning. Time with Ross Crossroads, Dave showed up at the very end, that guy. But but he's still, he's got some people that are coming in and meeting with them today, so it's pretty exciting that the work that we did or that that was able, we were able to accomplish, and just letting the the HOAs know that the county cares. I think that that was that was huge, and everybody was so complimentary of the county and and the work that we do, so I I thought it was a very, it was an amazing meeting. I think people enjoyed it, so thank you so much, Loretta, for for coming and for your support.
Absolutely, it felt very productive, so happy to be part of it. For the department commissioners.
On on a different note, uh you don't have to today, but could you please bring us shortly an update on Russell Woods Water System? And what we're doing to make sure that I'm not gonna get a call and pictures of what we've received a while back, I'd love to see what we're actually doing uh this time, instead of waiting for it to happen again.
Yep, absolutely, actually, uh what we're doing immediately is setting up a meeting with Department of Health to um gather their expertise and then getting ready to prepare an RFQ for assistance utilizing our legislative funds to fix the water quality problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, commissioners?
Not for me, I'm good.
Okay, all right, thanks, Loretta.
Thank you.
Okay, uh commissioners, we've hit the end of our formal agenda, is there anything else that uh merits some commissioner discussion? Before we sign off?
Budget, budget, budget.
That's right, back at it tomorrow morning at nine AM. Uh okay, so if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn until tomorrow at nine AM.
Mr. Chair, move adjourn until tomorrow at nine AM.
All second.
Move the second that we adjourn until Tuesday, October eighteenth at nine AM, uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, see everybody tomorrow morning.
All right.